One of them is this State Aid Rules book, and this is strictly for counties. And it's got different, you know, requirements on clear zones, on roadway width based on traffic and slopes and things like that. The other manuals that we have at our disposal is the MinDOT's Road Design Manual. And we frequently use, and there's a whole chapter, there's about a dozen or so of different, there's geometrics, there's, you know, there's all kinds of different road design manuals that we use. And that one in particular is a little more generous on how you can limit your clear zone. So they're both at our disposal, but they conflict a little bit. So Nathan started digging into this, started checking with, at the state in Detroit Lakes, and their assistant to the district state aid engineer said, "Yep, fine, you can use the road design manual and you can have your clear zone be, is it like twenty, twenty-six and a half feet?" And then the state aid engineer kind of caught it and said, "Well, no, you have to use this state aid rules book. If you want to use the road design manual, you'll have to use a variance." So then Nathan called down to St. Paul, talked to their state aid operations engineer, Paul Stein, and said he's tried several times to get them to amend this with a little asterisk that would say you could use, you know, both under certain circumstances. He's had several conversations with the Rules Committee, and they haven't bid on it yet. Nathan tells me there's another county that's doing the very same type of a variance request. So it's nothing out of the ordinary. We haven't typically had any designed variances. I don't think we've ever had one in the thirteen years I've been here, and certainly not this six or seven that Nathan's been here. Typically, we're able to stay within the rules that they tell us we need to design for, and we do so. In this case, the reason it's so important is there's a row of trees right in front of a resident out on Highway eighteen. And if we're forced to go an additional three feet based on the rules, those trees will have to come out. And we don't really need to have them out, and we don't really want to have them out. Basically, what it's saying is within twenty-six and a half feet from the shoulder, from the shoulder, you have to have a clear of obstructions. And if we have to be thirty feet of clear area, the trees are within that, and then they got to come down. It's going to make our right-of-way acquisition more than likely very difficult, and we would like to work with them a little bit, and we feel the state's got an option for us to do so. The urgency on it is the Rules Committee meets here in a couple of weeks, so they need our request right away, otherwise we would have followed up following board meeting a week from today, but kind of under the gun.
You can see it provides a nice buffer for that, for that home site there.
So we're already talking about two, two and a half, three and a half feet, between twenty-six and a half and thirty?
Yeah, the trees themselves are actually sitting two feet inside of the required clear zone now. So, yeah, they're at twenty-eight, they should be, according to the state aid rules, at thirty. MinDOT themselves, when they design their highways, they use this book for all state highways. They don't use the state aid. So, in this case, MinDOT's actually more flexible with their designs than they're allowing the counties to be.
Do you see any potential liability issues with us?
I guess I don't. And we've talked a lot about that in the last day or so. As I was reading through this a little closer, I wanted to make sure the county attorney's office had a good look at it, and so she understood what we were up to. Nathan did a lot of homework on it. He called and talked to a lot of people. They provided, I think, possible other examples on how to write the variance resolution, and the fact that there's another one also that's coming up from another county at the same time.
Okay. I would move the resolution, if questioned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Very good. Thank you.
I suppose there's no guarantee they'll accept it, though.
No, but we've been kind of given verbal that they have accepted it in the past, so I don't know why they wouldn't accept it. You know, back to Kevin's question, he asked if there was any liability or any worries of that. If it wasn't something that we were actually using a state aid manual for, let's say we were creating our own clear zone based on our own wishes, like, gosh, it'd be easier to deal with these people if we could just create our own clear zone, maybe we'd have a little issue there. But based on the fact of we are getting a variance to use one set of standards from another set of state standards, I think we're pretty covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just briefly, Brian, do you want to come over and just give us a brief, I asked this the deal regarding the Michael Burns on the elevator issue.
I just think anytime that we're getting involved with a contract where there's funds involved, we should probably just talk about it.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I apologize for at least not a memo, at least not a memo on the consent agenda. I guess I can explain a little bit. Really, it's Ricky's fault.
Sure. You blame others.
She did take a day off vacation. And this, this, what happened on this, I got to clear up. That was pretty funny, Ricky.
I've seen that laughing.
You know, why is she laughing? One, a few weeks ago, we had mentioned that we would have a major remodel project in regards to the elevators over in Frampton Forest Service Center. We've had four or five incidents where people have been stuck in the elevators, the fire department gets called, plus we've had several maintenance bills on that elevator, and we have a service contract with them. So Robbie was going ahead, and I want to say struggling with this, he was working with the two elevator companies to write some specs to put out for bids, and he's determined that both elevators will need to be replaced at the same time because of the, how the system works together. And the, we're looking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and he was, he became quite uncomfortable having the two companies write the specs for it to be put out to bid. He didn't feel that it was going to be a broad enough bid, and he came to me and said that he would really prefer working with the architects in regards to it. And I said, "I understand your concern on this," and, but I said, you know, "That'll be a contractual with Burns, and we do have the contract in hand, and it's a time and material type thing." And after this was asked about yesterday, I did contact them because they hadn't given us an approximate price, and they said it's going to run about fifteen thousand dollars to, to work on these specs for these elevators. And we expect the bids to be in the two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of money to write the specs, but Robbie just would feel much more comfortable having them. So that's, that's why we're requesting the contract.
Right. That's, I just wanted a good explanation.
I should have explained that in a memo.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And we approve the contract as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, and Jenny has reviewed it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you, Brian, for giving us the report. All right, committee reports. John, let's start with you today, if you're ready.
Yeah, okay, let me see, last week, I had a meeting with the, a board meeting for the Historical Society, and pretty much routine business, working on painting the, painting the school again this summer, so we've been looking on some grants for that and figuring out exactly what's needed. It's interesting, when you have something that's in the possession of the Historical Society, it's not just going out and painting, you have to do it to historical specs, you know, and it's a, it's a little extra, extra stuff. But that's, that's been, it's going to be done this summer, so. And we'll be looking for volunteers later on, so you guys are all handy with a paintbrush and all, you can come and give us assistance. There was a, last week, had a executive committee meeting for the Basin Commission, and there too, it was pretty routine, still involved with the transition from one director to the next, and that, that always can be stressful, and, but it's, it's going, I think, going well. Yesterday was the annual meeting for Lakeland Mental Health, and Frank was also there, and meeting went well. The reports were very positive for Lakeland, and there's, you know, money in the bank, I guess, is what I'm saying, they've done, they've done quite well. I've got reports for each of you brought back, so you can take a, take a look at that and see how, how things are going. One thing that, and this wasn't at the annual meeting, it was at the board meeting following, that I, I would like Brian to take a look at, and I still don't understand it, but there's a, other counties, I guess, are doing it. Grant County, you know, just said that they did it, they're leasing cars from Enterprise, and people can use these cars, they're saving lots of money over, over owning the cars and paying, and, and paying mileage and whatever for people whose own cars use. And, but they, somehow, and people can use the cars for their own personal use, as well as for, for the county's use. And, I don't know, it just, it sounds like, it makes it sound like everybody's a winner, and it's hard to figure that out. Somebody's got to be paying to build someplace, it seems to me. But, but I've got the sheet here explaining that, and I think we should take some time to look it over and figure out if that's something that we should, should look at. Grant County just got rid of all the vehicles they own and leased vehicles through this company. And, but people, employees then, who, who drive at least four thousand miles and up to seven thousand miles for business, for, I mean, for the county in this case, or they, they would be able to, to, to pay a set fee, two hundred dollars, two fifty, three hundred, depending on the kind of car they're using, and then they can use it for as many personal mileages, miles as they want, and it pays for the gas and everything. I, I don't, I don't get it. But anyway, the next, next meeting on the twenty-fourth of March, the person from Enterprise is coming to, to the Lakeland Board Meeting, and it'll be a chance to hear, and I said, "Maybe I should bring my administrator along to," I mean, we should all bring our administrators along to hear this message, so we'll see how that goes. But I'll give it to you, Brian. That's all I have.
Okay. Grant?
Let's see, had a jail, the jail committee meeting, but we've got those things resolved already today. And a couple Heartland Trail meetings, we're trying to get the route where we plan the Heartland Trail organized and find out who the landowners are, and we had to spend quite a bit of yesterday trying to identify all the various people who own property along the route, because we'll need to deal with that. We're trying to get ready for MetroCup coming in to help us out, so. And let's see, I had a, Clay County Council on Aging meeting last week in Glendon, and Dale Rowley, of course, gave an update on all the various things that he's doing, which is a lot, and, and there's seniors from each of the townships in the county there represented, so they do a good job and are very helpful with their volunteer work. Let's see, and then I went to the Drug Court graduation on Wednesday, and that was an impressive event, like it always is, so that was it for me.
Frank?
Tuesday, Executive Committee of FMCOG, we had some personalities to go over. Wednesday, I went to the Building Committee, where we went over selecting furniture and floor covering for the, for the motor vehicle area. I don't know if we got to a final decision yet on it or not, probably Brian can give us more information on that. I guess Wayne, you were there too. Thursday, the regular FMCOG meeting, just routine business going on over some upcoming projects. Monday, yesterday, of course, as John says, we were at Fergus Falls at Lakeland Mental Health. I'm just impressed with how many things Lakeland Mental Health is involved in. I mean, I just, as you get more involved with the county here and stuff, and what we're involved in, you know, they do a lot of stuff down there, and they're doing very well too, according to the report. So I got.
Okay, thank you. Wayne?
Tuesday, February eighteenth, Local Advisory Council for Adult Mental Health, General Business. Then there was a presentation by Lakes and Prairies on the procedure to sign up for mincer. There were several agency reports from the Social Connection, Moore Police Department, Churchers United, Lakeland Mental Health, and Perry St. John's. Wednesday, February nineteenth, Campus Improvement Committee, and Frank has talked about that, and Brian might want to add something to that, too. He was also there. Friday, February twenty-first, Adult Mental Health, Rethink Mental Health, at Dakota Medical Foundation, Needs Assessment. There were several presenters. Gina Milkie of the Public Health Department was instrumental in the planning and setting up of this, and there were well over a hundred people there. The main framework of the presentations were regarding mental health prevention, early intervention, treatment, recovery support, and crisis support. Yesterday, Monday, the twenty-fourth, Campus Improvement Committee meeting, went over and discussed final plans for the parking situation in the main entry, and I'll, Brian was there, the architects, and, anyway, I will refer to Brian to maybe add a little more to this than I did, because he was much more involved. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I did not bring my calendar with me today, I left it on my desk in my other job, and so.
You left it right there.
I'm sure I did, yeah. But I do remember the, obviously, we had the jail committee meeting, and there's the two issues that we acted on today, that's the only one I can report on now, and I'll have to report on what the other ones I had next week, because I, my mind is blank as to where I was last week. Nothing new to a lot of people.
Any comments about the thing with Oakport right now?
As far as I'm concerned, you know, I, I had an opportunity to watch some of that meeting that took place last night, and I, I think the city handled it really well. I thought the mayor did a really nice job opening up and talking about it, and council members talked about it. I did send a, a memo out to all of the, to the mayor and the council and the city manager, just for my role as chair of the Oakport Joint Powers Board, and also probably the longest currently active elected person closest to the time when that annexation occurred. That annexation agreement occurred in nineteen ninety, and I first took office in Oakport in ninety-two, but I was able to give a little bit of a historical perspective to, to some of what has transpired there and some of the, there's a lot of inaccuracies and stories that always come out when you get into these controversial subjects, and, and so I was hopeful to, hopefully my message was to clear some of that up. And of course, the thing that concerns me most is, and some of you will remember back in those days, that was a, that was a bitter, bitter divisional deal in Oakport. It was, it really divided that community, and, and my biggest fear as we move forward with this now, that, that we don't have to relive that again as a community. So, and I also addressed that to the council, that I, hopefully, they did, they did table their decision until April tenth to allow for a public meeting to be held on March twenty-seventh, which I think is excellent. Those people deserve to be heard and have their concerns raised. But ultimately, I hope the decision is, is made so that this doesn't just prolong forever. That's all, so.
Quick question.
Yes.
Say, Oakport wanted to pull out of it, can that be done legally?
No.
It's, it's going to happen, it's.
Yeah, it's, you know, based on, based on the council comments last night, it appears that, that there's no turning back. But what I was really impressed with was their willingness to work with those people, and the main goal, and Grant actually serves on the, on the Oakport Joint Powers Board, and he's heard me talk about it a lot, that our goal is to convince the city, and they're fully on board with it, is to keep that area, that rural nature, and to allow these people to live the types of lives that they've had, to not have curb and gutter, and to where there's ditch, where they have their ditches for their water drainage, to not have storm sewer, all those types of things, or, and snowmobiles, the snowmobiles that are there now will stay there, those who used ATVs, the policies will be similar to what they have, so. So it'll be pretty much life as usual from the rural residential character of it. You know, obviously, there's, there's a little bit difference when it comes to the taxes that are paid, but then hopefully with those additional taxes come additional services. So, but, but I, overall, I thought it was a well-run meeting last night and very good comments, and the people from Oakport did raise very good questions, and, and the city promised them that they would check into them, so.
How far around does it reach out? Is it just the area from ninety, ninety-three to?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it covers, it covers ninety-three to old, well, it goes to, up to Highway seventy-five for portions of it. Then the, of course, the other side of Highway seventy-five was what they referred to as a track three zone, which reverts back to county at the time of annexation. And the reason for track three was they wanted, that's, that's that area out there where Bert's truck and all those are, and they wanted to have some sort of, the city wanted to still have some sort of control as to what went there, and they didn't want to have more problems with lack of services there, so they had built that in as track three and had some rules and regulations for zoning in it, so. But we'll see, you know, it's, it's, it's not a for-sure deal, but based on what I've heard from the city council, it appears that it's going to happen, that they, they really want to be as helpful to those residents with their concerns, concerns as can be, so.
Okay, Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we had that jails needs committee, and I think you heard the, the main two topics that were discussed, and I think they were, were addressed very well. We did hold two meetings, and I'm looking over at Jenny, too, because she's been involved in this. We've held two meetings in regards to the Snowcross event that's coming up out of Buffalo River, and there's, there was a little bit of mix-up on the days that it's going to occur on, and you're probably going to hear something about that. They're permitted for Saturday, Sunday, and the event is scheduled to be held Friday, Saturday, which is going to create a little concern on some parties, and we have met and discussed that in detail and, and hopefully came up with, with an approach from the county's standpoint that may open some things up and may get this out on the table again for reconsideration of the whole CPU, or CUP on it, and that would be a good thing, so, in our minds. So we'll see what, what develops on it, but a few folks have gotten any feedback or any questions on that. We've spent hours on, on this already, and it's going to be, it's going to be kind of in-depth when it, when it, when it moves forward, I guess, so. Spent a little time on the Heartland Trail because Commissioner Whelan hosted it here last week on one meeting, so talked a little bit with those, with those groups. They're really putting their heart and soul in that project, I have to say. You've got some communities that are really interested in, in doing that, and I know Commissioner Whelan is as well. We did have a, a, a meeting in regards to moving ahead with ordering furniture, and we, that will be on your agenda coming forward. But probably the, the issue that is creating most of the discussion is the floor covering. And it might not be a big deal, but when you start talking about tile and the slippage and people coming from outside and the snow on the shoes, then you get into the liability issue, so then you want some rubberized carpeting as you come in, or the floor mats and things, and then you've got a maintenance issue, and, and, gosh, I looked at some of the, went around town and looked at some of this weekend, and what's been installed, and, man, with the salt coming in, then it turns white on the edges, and it looks terrible after a few months of use, and, so it's, we're still talking about that. Frank, I know you mentioned that we're still discussing that, and I guess maintenance came to me afterwards and said, you know, "But we are expected to keep that clean, and so we have to give that some real thought." And I know we discussed that a little bit more on, on Monday, when we had a meeting yesterday in regards to it, too, so. Had a conference call in regards to the diversion in that, the trip that's going to DC, that you've seen that in the paper, so that's all set, and they have a pretty aggressive schedule. Clay County will not be represented, but the City of Morehead certainly is, is going this time, so. And as I usually say, that, you know, had some time with some personnel issues, and probably, Mr. Chair, if I would, I'd like to discuss a couple of those with you after the meeting. Keep you informed on those, so. And I guess, Wayne, you're on the Personnel Issues Committee, too, if I could catch both of you at the same time, that would be okay. We, I got called last week, I think about Wednesday or so, asked if, if I could meet with the two administrators, and I, I think I tried to inform you folks on this on Friday after I got back, but we met over in Detroit Lakes, the three administrators to talk about some upcoming personnel changes. There might be some in Otter Tail, and there's definitely some in Becker County. And what they wanted to meet on was the fact that, is there interest in Clay County looking at sharing some social services, administrative duties, and the financial aspect of it, and, because maybe if you've noticed, Becker County lost their social service director, and like I said, there may be some changes in Otter Tail, I'm not sure on that yet. So we discussed a lot of different options and a lot of different thoughts, and I certainly kept in mind what I felt maybe your guys' perspective would be on it, and I know some of you will want to show some interest and some may not, so I think it would be good if we were to maybe discuss this on a committee level or something, or even if it's at the board, if that's what your wishes are, to, so, you know, and, and we, we agreed to meet to talk to our boards about it, and, and I think it's on the twenty-third, we're going to meet here in Clay County, because Rhonda's gone, this came up pretty quick, we need to involve social services as well in it, and I don't know where you'd want to go on that, Mr. Chair. We haven't talked about it individually, because this happened late Friday when I got back, so maybe we can talk about how you want to.
Well, I, I think it's, I think if we're going to have somebody on this committee on this thing, too, that, you know, as we all know, that whole social service thing and the budget is, is massive, so I, I would hope we'd have, what, what are you looking at, like two?
Well, I think that would be good, and frankly, I, I know it's kind of a little clumsy here, because I know some, or a couple of them talked about, maybe their personnel committees discussing this, but then social services committee gets involved in it. We don't really have a social service committee, but you have, we have commissioners that serve on social service and functions, you know, so. And I, frankly, and I mentioned probably this, too, that, you know, Public Health now has been studying this for about three years, and going down that path, and I don't know if that's a similar path that some would like to see pursued on this, but, so I don't know, Personnel Issues is a committee that's already formed, we, you know, could utilize the two commissioners on that, but I know there's, we'd probably input from others, so I don't know how you'd like to handle it.
It's probably one of those things, though, that if, you know, they've got some significant personnel issues in one and possibly both those other counties, and so it's, you know, it's probably something that needs to be done fairly quickly then, rather than, you know, unlike Public Health where that wasn't the issue, so. But to me, it makes sense. I mean, I think any opportunity we get with surrounding counties to look at things like this, I think we're missing the boat if we don't do it, and, you know, at least to see what the possibilities are and what kind of cost savings there are, and efficiencies and all those things.
We have a, we have a poster that's sitting right over by that light switch over there, and it says Minnesota Redesign, and, and these are the types of things that are part of what Minnesota Redesign is. what Minnesota Redesign is supposed to be all about. And so I, I certainly think it would be in our interest to, you know, you get some of these things, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, but if you don't have the dialogue, you'll never find out. So, you know, so I fully support it. You know, I'd, I'd be willing to, to sit on that if there's somebody else here who would want a volunteer or.
I'd be interested in being involved too, but I, you know, a lot of the personnel committees.
I don't, I don't know that it would have to be the, does it make a difference, Wayne? Do you wanna, would you wanna, should you keep it with the Personnel Issue Committee or?
I'm not interested.
Okay. Well, that's, takes care of that.
I, you know, if John wants to, that's fine. Yeah.
It's maybe something we can do with, I mean, more of us can be involved in different ways, probably, there's.
Well, why don't we, I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna have to call this something, I suppose, just to, committee to research multi-county administration.
Yep. Keep calling. Okay. Yep. That would be good. Yeah.
Multi-county administration of.
Collaboration.
Yeah. Of.
We have to be careful in it so we don't want our staff to get involved in the, in the negative issues, issues that are, some counties are dealing with right now.
Right.
Well, and frankly, funny you should mention that, Commissioner Everett, because they, they were pretty excited about this over there and they'd look at me and they'd say, we aren't seeing your enthusiasm with this. Well, you know, we have some concern and Commissioner Whelan hit it right on the nose. There's, there's been some personnel changes that have afforded this opportunity and that's why I was called this last week and, and so. It's something you have to go in with your eyes wide open.
Well, I would suggest maybe that, that we might first have a little update, John and I and you and maybe Rhonda, as to what we're going into, so we can get a little background.
Absolutely.
And if you'd wanna arrange that and so.
Sure.
So if that's okay with the board, we'll, John and I will tackle it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would move that that be an official committee at this time, if we're doing, whatever the name is.
Second? Motion, and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we, we also met on Monday yesterday with the architect and also highway, because we also told you that we would be pushing forward with the improvements to the parking lot out there too at Motor Vehicle Department. And with the fact that when the frost is out, that's when the atrium is gonna be done out there. If we're gonna do any other concrete work or any other design to the front of that building, we feel that we need to do that now as well, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice place and we, and we want it to look decent from the outside too, so we want to do some landscaping things, so. So we met on that and I think made some improvements on that.
So what's, while they're constructing that, what's gonna be the method of entrance?
We will have a entrance to the west. That overhead door that sits on that west side, that big one, that is coming out and there will be an entrance to that west because there's going to be a meeting room back on that side as well. So that'll be able to be utilized.
On the west side?
Yes.
So people have to walk around.
People can park over there? Can they park in that?
They can park over there. In fact, there's lots of parking over there. It's just not a paved lot necessarily.
Isn't that where employees park?
That's where employees park. That's exactly right. Mm-hmm. And we did talk about maybe making some improvements on that side too, so basically the parking's around the building, we can direct people in, so, yeah.
And that's not gonna be for a long period of time, is it?
No, it won't be. No. No, it won't be. It'll, it'll go pretty quick, I think. I mean, it all takes time when you're there daily, but if you wait a week or two, there's, gets to be a lot of work done in that time period, so it's.
So are we still on schedule?
Yes, we are. Mm-hmm.
I stopped over there last week and looked, it's framed up pretty well.
Yes. Making some good progress. Mm-hmm. Right? Anything else, Brian? Well, we had new hire orientation yesterday. I'll talk to you about the personnel matter. Oh, I don't know if you noticed in the paper, but there was an article reference Morehead City and, and the, a new intoxicated misdemeanor law. I'm sure Commissioner Whelan picked up on, on that and, you know, there was a discussion that there was quite a bit of short-term holding room in the jail and that generated a little conversation with us and, and the sheriff's office and, and the police department. So they've scheduled a meeting to discuss that and, and frankly, the only reason why there's adequate temporary housing is because we push out our long-term people, so we would love to hold those back and fill that jail, but, so there really isn't any extra available short-term and they understand that now. It was just kind of a misunderstanding. But if you, if you read that in the paper, it's not that we have extra room at our jail. We, we have very, we don't have any extra room at our jail and we just wanna make sure that that's a clear message that, so. And I think that's it. Mr. Chair?
And I see here we have this brochure regarding a retirement celebration coming up on the 4th of March.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. From 10 to 3. Do we have, is there gonna be like a, a presentation involved there at any particular time or is there a program scheduled within that time period or?
Well, no. What I've been told is kind of an open, open house and it is scheduled kind of all day long so that the commissioners could attend and, and we really, I know we've talked a little bit about if there's a presentation on behalf of the county or anything, so.
If something's decided, you can let us know.
Yeah. Yeah. Great.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Vicki, you got anything for us? Okay. All right. We'll be adjourned.